Mary Kay?
Yes, yes.
Baldwin?
Here.
Baldwin?
Yes.
You?
Here.
Vaughn?
Yep.
Newbelle?
Yes.
Tyler? And Stranger?
Okay. I'm sure Danny's gonna be here, so I just talked to him a little while ago. Um, is there any public comment there?
There was none in the book.
There's none in the book, okay. Then we'll go on and, uh... You're up. Okay, this year, um, board members, you've seen this information before. We've talked about it throughout the school year. So I'm gonna try to move along in a timely manner. But if you have questions, just feel free to stop at any point, and I'll try to clarify them if I can. So, um, this presentation and the budget book that should be, you should have received this week, doesn't happen just by myself. And I'd like to give a shout out to the folks in our office. And, um, in particular, Angel Crane helps me with the financials. Lori Leiderman is responsible for managing our grants. Aaron Witt put together the budget itself. And then Tanya Hall and Melanie Ryan did all the staffing and information. So I wanna thank them publicly for their assistance. Okay, we're gonna work like we've done in previous years. I wanna spend a fair amount of time on how the budget is developed, how we determine particularly our revenues. We're gonna talk about what's inside the budget, and then we're gonna just scratch the surface on benchmarking, comparing Anago to other districts. Okay, this is a slide I've trained in before. And basically, the revenue limit formula equalization, it can be boiled down into just three really basic concepts. So within the revenue limit formula, it's basically a three-year rolling average for enrollment. It's, um, basically your base value. How much did you spend in previous years? And then it's looking at how property-rich you are within your district. And that determines the whole thing. So it's, you know, conceptually, it's really quite simple. So the enrollment and prior year spending sets the revenue limit. And the revenue limit is got only two components, whether it's state aid or local taxes. And it's just important to know that the size of the revenue limit is determined by enrollment and prior year spending. And then it's divvied up by, um, two segments. And in Anago's case, we're pretty close to being two-thirds funding. So the state is at two-thirds, we're at one-third. And depending on how the aid formula shapes out, we're gonna be very close to that in a year. So, um, it's not all that complicated. All right, so now, this is a graph you've seen before. It's a historical look at, um, our FTE. So with the three-year rolling average, it's more than just enrollment count. Each kiddo counts a different value. And four Kers, for example, count for .6, and everyone else is a full FTE. And, um, at this point in the year, we use just an estimate. We're estimating our three-year rolling average at 2,041 kids, a decrease in enrollment of 68 students. So in the back of my mind, I'm thinking of that revenue limit formula that I just told you was based on enrollment. We're gonna have a decline in the size of our revenue limit formula by 68 kids. This year, on the second-year binaural budget, each full-time FTE counts for $10,000. So when we start thinking as we're building next year's budget, if we're declining 68 students, we're gonna get a one-time exemption for those kids this year. We know that, thinking about next year, we're losing $680,000 because of the declining enrollment. Um, enrollment is really important to us, and we spend a lot of time looking at it. This is the graph that Mary Kay has helped me work on. And we're looking at a window of live births that she gets from the Department of Health for the district. And looking at it, we are really pretty consistent over this nine-year period. And we're having about 195 to 197 live births that are in our school district. Historically, we could count on 85% of those kids coming to our district. That's no longer true. With parental choice and open enrollment, our kids are going every which way, and we're probably, on average, about 70% of these kids will show up at our door by the time they hit kindergarten. So this is the graph you've seen. I find it really interesting. Consolidation was going to be inevitable. And, um, so the work that we did last year was really important. This is a nine-year history of where our live births came from. And you can see consistently that, you know, obviously, the city of Anago is the vast majority. And, um, it's very, very unfortunate, but our rural township simply couldn't support schools. And the data is very, very clear. So this is a graph that I, at this time of the year, I find really bothersome. So what we've got is we've got enrollment or students on the vertical. We've got time along the horizontal. The green line are students that are choosing to select Anago, open enroll in. The bottom line, the red, are two students that are choosing options other than Anago. And this year's budget is built around 142 students potentially leaving. And Mary Kay's gonna update us that that number is probably not very accurate at this point. And so you understand, that is an expense to us of $1.4 million. So it's something that we, as a district, really need to concentrate and focus on because I don't think it's sustainable that that trend continues. This is, um, our, this is our revenue limit over time, so the size of our first bubble in the formula. And you can see over time, it's gotten smaller. The last, since 2017, the revenue limit formula includes parental choice vouchers to PES schools. And we're estimating this year that'll be in the neighborhood of about $750,000. That's inclusive in that revenue limit. So when we look at the revenue limit, it includes exemptions, and the exemptions are the declining enrollment provision as well as the Wisconsin parental choice. So when the governor says that we're gonna get $10,000 per kid, we actually get $10,600 some odd dollars based on last year's declining enrollment exemption and the parental choice program. Within the revenue limit, we have to do the 138 levy as part of that. And it's the prior service agreement. We've talked about this before for WRX. And in four years' time, that'll free up about $300,000 that will be used for operational expenses, which are currently for the prior service. So where do we get our revenues from? There's really just three sources. You know, in typical years, the state source, this year it's gonna be 62%. We'll talk about why it's a little smaller. But, um, local sources typically are a little more than 26%. But because of the CARES Act and because of grant carryover, the federal source was generally around 6% as next year it's gonna be 9%. So there's a slight shift towards more federal money in this year's budget. So let's look closely at where we're gonna get our revenues from. And this is looking at fund balance from this prior year. And we began, we finished out 2018, 19 with 5.4 million. After the coronavirus and school closures, we ended this past fiscal year with 6.7 million. So we built fund balances. So within that center column, we've talked about this before, that unspendable are primarily are, we call them pre-cased. Bills that are due in June that are ready for July business. And the biggest one is health insurance. The next one down to 1.4 million is our health insurance, HRA. The $75,000 is a commitment to Naboka. And then the $701,000 is carryover from primarily AGI, an accumulated carrier. So what's important is this year's budget is gonna be up 775,000 before we even get started because we've got grant carryover we're planning on spending and we're the construction director. So now I wanna get back, we put 1.3 million back into fund balance because of COVID. What's important to note is these bubbles are proportionate to prior year spending. So the state aid formula is what we spent this in 2019, '20. So if we put 1.3 million in, we have less expenditures to claim state aid on. So the revenue limit formula says this year it's state aid minus property, or, uh, revenue limit minus state aid is property taxes. It's all relative to what all the other districts did. So I know that across the state, we, I think we had roughly 93% of our budget was expended. Across the state, it's closer to 97. So relative to the other districts, we probably spent a little bit less. And I think we will get a little bit less aid. So my estimate of property patches is likely to be low because we give an estimate back in, on July of what we think our expenditures are. And, um, we don't know it until October, when all the states reach war. So there's, this is, and the far right-hand side is what we're budgeting for local sources. And you can see I'm estimating we're gonna have a slight decrease. But there's nothing we report. It's pretty much like historical trends. We have just a declining revenue limit, so our local taxes are likely to go down. Same thing's true for the state sources. So this is what we're getting from the state. We get 18 million. And, um, we're trending right on at this point for, you know, and again, I don't know what's gonna happen with the aid formula, but we're expecting it to be similar to last year's. So then here are our federal sources. And if you look at the bottom number there in the right-hand column, you can see we're estimating over $1 million additional in federal aid. And it's kinda complicated. Most of our state programs, we get the money upfront. The federal programs, we have to spend the money first, and then we claim and we get aid back on it. So we have grant carryover in Title I, Title II, let's see, I say Title IV and a little bit Title V. And that will be accumulated. But the two biggest areas are through the CARES Act. And the one is ESSER. We're getting over $5 million. And then the Governor's Emergency Relief Fund, we're getting $308,000. So we're getting an additional, it's around $850,000 in CARES Act money that we will be, we've already started spending. So with the CARES Act, um, these are the criteria for what we can spend the money on. And when you look at response to COVID, the biggest example I can have is Jake's been doing an awful lot with sanitization, buying chemicals, having a PPE available. We've spent so far $47,000 on just cleaning chemicals and PPE, and we haven't even opened the doors yet. We've spent roughly about $315,000 on technology, the iPads, the ProBooks, the Kajits, the learning management software. We are also required to share these dollars with the parochials. So we're gonna spend the, the actual formula on how we're gonna equitable participation is in the court system right now. And we're gonna spend anywhere, we're gonna share anywhere from about 7% to probably about 16% of these grant funds with PES schools. And they have the same criteria on how they can spend them. Um, this is our special education, so we have our special education revenues. And, um, again, we've been just holding very, very steady. The federal, there are federal requirements that we maintain local support. And we're gonna do that this year. There's nothing alarming. There is one minor tweak where you can see our state source, we're gonna receive pretty close to $1 million in state categorical aid. That's up slightly. There's something called some certain pot of money. So there's a fixed amount that the legislature's going to give us. And depending on how the state's, uh, local districts spend their money determines what kind of aid we're gonna get. We're supposed to get 30%. Last year, we were supposed to get 25%, and we ended up getting less than that. So I'm estimating a little under on the revenues from the state's categorical aid. Questions on that? All right. So how do we spend our money? This is very similar, except we're typically somewhere in the low 70s, low to mid 70s between salary and benefits of our budget spent on staff. You can see that number's down a little bit. And our purchase services, those are contracts, utilities. You know, when I say contracts, it could be bussing, it could be professional development, it could be anything. They're up. And at this point in the year, as the business manager, I don't know how the grant grain's gonna be spent. So I plug it into, um, usually curriculum development or professional development, PD. So we've got big chunks of money at this time of the year, and that's coming through showing that we're, our purchase services are up. The other area is, um, non-capital equipment supplies. So essentially, there's four areas. Benefits, wages, services, and supplies that you figure out in the budget. You've seen this one before, it's a top 10. And there's only really 10 areas that we spend 95% of our budget. And the largest, thank goodness, is instruction. You know, we're spending over 36% on instruction. Then we have operations. Operations is a big area. You know, it's everything from building, maintenance, custodial services. You know, the 1.2 million we spend on transportation. It's anything that has to do with the business office and that supports the activity of buildings. The interfund transfer, that is special education. You know, we're, I believe, we're supporting special ed to about the tune of locally about 60% of all special ed or maybe a little more than that. That's that number. General tuition is open enrollment tuition that we're paying the states and other districts. And then instructional services is primarily libraries and technology support. So in those five areas, that's 85% of how we spend our money. So it's, again, it's really quite simple. This is a graph that I've seen before, and I was gonna try to put together, and I started on this about a week and a half ago. And we still had multiple hires. And we actually were making an offer yet today, and we still have open positions. So our plan is this year to use much of the grant carryover to support additional FTE. And we're thinking that if we were fully staffed, we would add five FTE this year. And it would be in Title I services, AGR support, and our social worker. We'll briefly touch on the other funds. It's, uh, I just think for a comprehensive look at where the budget is. So Fund 46 is capital projects. Fund 50 is food service. I'm required to talk to you about OPEB. And then Fund 80 is community services. And these are all areas we've touched on before. So, um, we end of the year with $323,000 in our capital improvement fund. And that will be available to spend as of July 1, 2020. And I think that that will be really advantageous for Jake so that we can run projects to start the school year, and we can, we can go ahead and claim aids and put money in and take it right out in the next fiscal. And it'll just be a really great management tool for us. It does require that we look at a comprehensive capital improvement plans. And I would suggest that Jake, before we tap into this, that we revise that plan and update it, and we present to the board on how we're gonna use that money. And, um, I just really look forward to it because it's gonna make kids' lives a lot easier.
So you think it all gets spent in one year?
But JD, what we'll be able to do is, we could take Jake's budget, for example. And what we try to do now is we, he's got 300,000 of remodeling. We could, we could use prior year funds and pull it out of the fund. And then, um, we have until July 30th to put money into it. So we can look at how the year ends and say, okay, we're gonna dump it in and put it in, and then he can take it, take it out. I just think it's a really great management tool. And we can use it to keep our taxes in a manageable condition if we choose to.
I mean, so it's not, you can just keep putting money in and out over time. It's not like you have to use it up.
Yeah, okay. And our interest, as you can see, isn't, isn't all that great. You know, right now, it's really difficult to get good interest. And, um, so it's just something I think we should do. So this is Fund 50. And, um, we ended the year, we began the year with $639,000 fund balance. Fund 50 can carry a fund balance. It operates completely on its own, so this is food service. And, um, Sarah did a fantastic job arranging the department. And she had plans on spending it down. She bought some new equipment. And she had future plans, but then COVID hit, and we had the summer feeding program. And, um, the summer feeding program, we got reimbursements at a really good clip, and we had excellent participation. You know, at its peak, we were doing over 900 meals a day. And she finished with an $87,000 additional transfer in the fund balance. So what I wanna point out is, you can see now she's, the fund balance is sitting at 727,000. That's in a segregated account. And DPI has spend-down requirements that Sarah, you're not supposed to have any more than three months of operating expenditures within the fund balance. So Sarah's gonna again work on plans on improving her offerings and possibly looking at replacing some aging informer. We also are showing that we, we transferred in $110, $3,500 to cover bad debt. This one's a little complicated. This is our Fund 73 trust, so this is post-employment retirement benefits. And we have two categories. We have a traditional OPEB, which are retirees that have health insurance that we're contributing some to, and that's managed by PMA. And then we have our HRA for our current active teachers. And it's providing them a premium-only HRA account at their point of retirement. And we had a beginning balance of $2,078,149. We had contributions of $671,884.39 with total disbursements of $561,135.43 for an ending balance of $2,223,385.45. I'm required to tell you that information. And I would be prepared to go over this if you want more detail. But essentially, we have two categories where we have retirees that get health insurance benefits, and we have others that are on the HRA. After we've made adjustments to our administrative contracts, our liability in OPEB is gonna be drastically decreased. So next year, we have a new actuarial study that's gonna occur. We'll reevaluate how we're funding it. And it's likely that that portion, our contributions that we're making for OPEB, you can see there's a lot of activity in and out of that account, will be down. And we're expecting by 20, by next year, to be under $100,000 worth of activity. So teachers are just retiring out of the system. They're reaching HCS5, and their eligibility then, when they hit net payrolls, will be longer. Some questions on that? All right. This is Fund 80. And in Fund 80 is our community service. And essentially, what it's for is the pool, the operational pool. That's the only thing we run through Fund 80 right now. We levy $270,000 for the pool. And in this year's budget, they just finished replastering both pools. We had anticipated spending down our fund balance this year to help cover the Babruska Pool replastering. But when COVID hit, we cranked the heat down, we cooled the water in the pool. We cut almost all of our expenses. And we dipped in the fund balance a little bit, but it wasn't nearly what we were anticipating. So our standard budget for the last four or five years, general operations, is in that $360,000 range. And we're estimating this year that, that's what we're gonna be. So what I wanna do now is I wanna switch gears a little bit and just really talk a little bit about benchmarking, but more importantly, talk about the potential tools that we have to do really find benchmarking, or benchmark. So for me, this is a, I use Forecast Analytics. And on their website, they have an analytic tool. And this, to me, is a graphical representation of, very simplistic, of the Anago School District. And what I'm showing here is a graph of declining enrollment. So we have enrollment going down. Economically disadvantaged students as a percentage of our population going up. And we have a pretty steady population, percentage of population, of students with disabilities. So that's really who we are. And I think that's important because we have to know who we are to know how to move forward and improve student achievement. So what I did is I looked at, um, about 145, the number escapes me right now, school districts got gear funding. So they got additional support through the CARES Act from the governor. And they were identified as being economically disadvantaged with districts that needed assistance with increasing student achievement. And I wanted to look at, of that group of 145 or 146 districts, how many look like Anago? So the easiest thing I did is who got the same amount of money as we did. And I started looking at them demographic. So this is the group. And you can see our enrollments are close. Our low income is within, you know, seven or eight percent of one another. And, um, I just thought, maybe this is a group, they're, you know, northern Wisconsin schools, that we could start comparing ourselves to. And, um, so looking at them, this is 2019 data. It's already two years old, but this is all I had to work with. Our ACT scores are very comparable. You know, they're within one full count, one full score. Somewhere around 18 and a half, 18 and a half. This is a graph I wanna spend a little more time on getting to know and using as a drill down. So what, what we've got is we've got expenditures on the left, so going vertical, the more money you're spending per child. And then the accountability score on the school report card is what's going across the horizontal. And, um, I know, again, this is two-year-old data, and we know back then that this was... And we know back then, we didn't perform. But Julie talked about in her open remarks to the staff, you know, what are we going to do as individuals to ensure that our students have better outcomes tomorrow than they did today? So when we look at this, you know, here are schools that are similar. But on this particular day, in this particular year, we didn't do so well on this card. And could we target who we're looking at to shift where we are on that continuum? And in particular, when you look back at Hayward, you know, I don't know anything about Hayward. But, you know, their low income is very close to ours. Their enrollment, they're slightly smaller schools than we are. But on that particular day, on this particular task, they did pretty well. They exceeded expectations on their student support card for that year. So I think I'd like to spend some time working with the principals because I'm very familiar with the analytic tools. We're in the Forecast 5. We've got five lab going. I know that our teachers are looking at data to drive their decisions. And we just have the tools. We're really, really ready to make that adjustment. This is one I always get concerned with. You know, with consolidation, we've hit the staff pretty hard. And when I look at graphs over time of FTE, we have cut FTE at a little bit greater rate than we've declined in enrollment. And part of that has to do with the open enrollment out. But it also is a fact that we spend less per child, so we have less money to go around. But I think there's a connection. And we've talked about this last year. I showed you a slide of experience that was lumped in five-year intervals. This year, I decided, let's drill down and look at it a little closer. So we've got teachers in the district that have served from zero years to 34 years. And you can see how many are in each one of those cohorts. And ideally, each group would have five teachers in it. You know, we've got 68 teachers in a group with less than five years within the district. And we just, you know, I think it's becoming us. And we've just got to turn that around. And like Julie has said many, many times, make Anago estimation districts and get people to stay in and get them to commit. And I think if we do that, we'll have great things happen. So I think, oh, now we've got to talk about the faculty. That's kind of important. This is one you see too. And at this particular point, I don't even like showing it to you. The levy includes a general fund of $7.7 million. We've talked about prior service levy of $301,000. The levy for the pool, for a total of $8,327,544. This is based, again, just on today's estimate. I have no idea where, we won't know until October 15th until the state sets their need. I'm using the tax to come up with the bill rate. I'm using 2.5% increase in the equalized value of our property within the district. I looked at the Department of Revenue, and that's their general estimate as of August 1st. And they'll set that on October 1st. Within that, we are at about 9% of our bill rate is accounted for on the parental choice program. So tonight, later at the board meeting, they'll be asking us to adopt a budget That's all expenses to call upon. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Any questions or comments from anybody in the board? Okay, if there's no questions, we can adjourn from this meeting. We should do a adjournment.
Second.
All those in tables?
Aye.
Okay. Aye. Unless anybody has done, I'm afraid, we're going to move right into the next meeting. And we'll call the meeting to order. We'll do the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance.
And a roll call.
No, no.
Andy, Mary?
Yes, yes.
Jim, Alzer?
Here, here.
Mike, Boldy?
Here, here.
Noel D?
Here, here.
Jimmy Long?
Here.
Mary Nufeld?
Here.
Danny Pius?
Here, here.
JD Schrader?
Here, here.
And we will go to the consensus.
Move the board approved the minutes from July 21st, 2020. Board of Education meeting, financial report from July 2020. Concentration of the current bills, check number 403534018 in the amount of $395,018.44. ACH number 202100035320210097 in the amount of $224,736.24. And one wire transfer in the amount of $10,051.99 for a total of $629,806.67.
Second, second. Any questions or comments, any of that? We'll go ahead and a roll call.
Alzer?
Yes.
Boldy?
Yes.
Dee?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Nufeld?
Yes.
Pius?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
And next would be public comment. And JD, look and see if anybody has signed into the document. No, okay. We'll go on to the COVID update.
Okay. Don't you all look forward to the time when this will not be on our agenda? But until then, I don't see Tom Schofield here quite yet. So if he comes, he'll give an update on activities and athletics. One thing I did want to tell you from my own information, I asked Beth Decker and Tom to run a list to see if we had remote learners participating in our high school sports. And we do. We have at least one on each team. So I thought that was interesting. And I was glad to see that wasn't a deterrent for remote learners. The numbers that we have for remote learners as of today, Mark ran those for me, and they are 612, I believe. And Stephanie Parker ran a summary of our total enrollment from September 2019 to September 2020. And it's a reduction of 121 students. So that's actually a little better than I was thinking it would be. But, you know, Mary Kay will address open enrollment later tonight. And those numbers are still coming in. Just today, she talked to me about a few that crossed her desk. Each of our five buildings is down in the last year in enrollment. The high school down 56 students. Middle school, 42. East, 26. And then 16 at North and West at 10. And the RVA went up by 29 students, which we thought might happen because that started already in the spring when we were closing. So that is an update there. And at this time then, based on enrollment numbers and a very discouraging email that I sent you about devices that we ordered to be one-to-one caught in customs and being delayed, Mark has some numbers worked out where if we address remote learners first, which makes sense, we should be okay. So Mark, can I have you talk about those devices, please? I have copies.
Oh, you're okay?
Yep. I wasn't sure, Mark, so I made copies. This is what he'll be referencing if you want to take one. Do you have one, Mark?
I have it on my computer.
Are they folded? One more? One more, yeah.
Yeah, first of all, I thought my rep that I deal with was CWD. And they're such a big corporation, plus they're still small. They make communication very easy with them. They wanted to send their apologies when we ordered them. They said the devices would be here by mid-July for sure. But since that dates in early June, there's been a lot of border wars going on with customs and everything. And so that's what's holding them up. They're in customs right now, just waiting to get clearance here before they get, before they come to the United States and they go through our customs. The good thing is that power shipment is the next one to get cleared through customs. So once they say clear, you should have a mature order. And they're hoping to have the one set, the 220, that's really disrupting most of the business. We're hoping to get that here by late August, early September. It'll take us a few days, of course, to get 200 rolled around and ready for students to use. I'm sure my guys will handle it. They've been doing an excellent job through all of this. So we'll be able to get them out in a couple of days after we get our hands on them. So in the meantime, we're not going to be one-to-one like we had hoped and wanted to be. So like Dr. Sprague was saying, that with the handouts of the remote learners coming up this Friday and the following Monday, we're setting up from 10:00 to 5:00 in High School Commons. We've got a lot of four tables, so four families will be getting their devices at any one time. They had a, I sent out a sign-up sheet, so parents were able to pick the time and date that they worked best for them. So that's, the database will be going by for that. We'll have everything there. So hopefully, it'll go smooth as we all want it to be. And they'll get all their devices between Friday and Monday. Giving them one-to-one puts our in-school teachers and students in a little bit of a different situation. I was hoping to be at least two-to-one. With the remaining ones, the only thought right now that is not going to be two-to-one would be the middle school. If you reference that sheet in the bottom right where the starting inventory is, that's how many Chromebooks we have in each one of the buildings, that starting inventory column. And if I pull out from those schools to make up for the 282 devices we need to still get to remote learners, that leaves that remaining number in those buildings. The remaining numbers that are in East, North, and West would be a two-to-one right now with these student enrollment numbers. That's a pretty fluid number these days, that coming and going by the hour or so. But as of yesterday, these are the numbers for student counts. With the middle school, we need about 256 to be two-to-one. So we're about 41 or 51 short there. As things settle down, I will look at our count at the high school. But when we buy for classroom sets at the high school, we buy with like 20 or maybe 25 extra with students coming in and to have some for repair. So taking away from the high school would only give us, would make us a little bit blind there if something would happen and get an influx of students. Or we have a couple of them go down and we have nothing to hand out. As of right now, that building wouldn't be touched. They'll remain one-to-one. And with the 4K and kindergarten being the iPads, they'll still remain one-to-one. So we're only talking about the first grade through seven. Big number, but it doesn't affect every single grade of these numbers here. If you see in the middle column, you can see where the grades, 2 through 7, the student count is 754. But because the first grade are going to get the touchscreen Chromebooks, so that, their 115 count right now wasn't even in the mix for regular Chromebooks. But we've got to have them back in now. So the total student count, 1 through 7 is 869. And we have the remote students again, 1 through 7 is 282 students. That leaves 587 students in school, 1 through 7. And you can see just to the right of that, our Chromebooks on hand, we're sending out a 606 inventory. Taking that 282 back out, again, we have just 324 Chromebooks for those 587 students. So like I said, it's not a real welcoming number. And it's definitely not what any of us wanted. Times are a-changing. We just, I mean, we tried, and it's just not there for the one-to-one situation yet.
Questions?
Yes.
The high schoolers that returned their Chromebooks, are any of them in working order for the short term, like for a month or two, stopgap arrangement?
We can check, we'll check that inventory again a little bit better. I mean, those are four years old and are pretty difficult to get them back. We definitely can check that stock. We might be able to have the middle school out with that number to try and get them to two-to-one. But I don't want to promise anything, but we'll definitely take a look at them and see what we can do with that number.
We got to give it to our computer then?
I hope that we don't get to that point. I'll call you first.
Okay. You want to have yours, JD?
What is that doing? What's going on?
I can get bored, I feel like, too. We all can. It's a little small. Pretty much, it's just. What country are they stuck in? China?
Well, that's where they're coming from. So what customs they're stuck in right now, my guess is China. The iPads took a little bit longer in the China customs than they did in our customs.
When did we actually order those? It felt like so long ago.
The order went out, I think it was like June 20th or something like that.
Okay.
I would just like to reiterate that Mark and his department have really pulled out all the stops. They're working to make this be as advantageous as it can be for students and staff at this time. So I just really appreciate all the work, including planning the distribution on Friday and Monday. That was no small undertaking either. So hopefully, they'll do well. I think you said up to 168 each day.
There's 168 spots each day.
And Friday is the one.
Friday, my absolute full, when I checked, north, there was like 10 or 12 spots.
Okay. So we're on our way. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Tom Schofield, can you come on up and give us a brief update on activities and athletics?
Sure. We actually had our first event tonight. Just coming from the tennis courts where our varsity team took on Newman. And they were just finishing up. And it went really well, following all the VIA procedures and guidelines, making sure that all of the student athletes were masked and they were keeping distance. I thought it went extremely well tonight. With all of our other sports, we have tennis going, we have girls swim right now, and we also have cross country. And then in the next following week, starting after school, we have all the other three sports starting. The higher-risk type label sports are football, volleyball, and also football, volleyball, soccer. So we've been, it's been a lot of work going over all the guidelines, procedures, procedures and everything. Trying to figure out not only what's best for our coaches and our athletes, but also trying to work and think about our venues and everything. Like I said, tonight with tennis, I've been heavily talking with Dr. McKenna, trying to make sure that we're doing everything right and fighting by all of our guidelines and making sure. and making sure that we're keeping our community as safe as possible as well as everybody involved. So looking forward to the other event venue types. We're looking for, with the aquatic center, we're looking at no spectators in there. Just that there is no airflow in there and to have people in that close proximity would not be good. We're looking at not putting up the bleachers over at Bristol Field. That way that can disperse the crowd when they come in. Mass doesn't be, not mandatory, but highly encouraged. And we tell all our athletes that, tell their parent caregivers that are coming to watch them. There were a lot of people masked outside today at the tennis courts, which was great to see. And so we're looking at that for soccer. Still looking at, you know, our indoor volleyball, we're looking at keeping all of our athletes masked the whole time inside and maybe having it to be two vouchers per athlete to give out, to bring in a smaller crowd. And then once they get in, obviously making sure that they are all masked and that they are socially distanced as they watch the volleyball games. And then for football, looking at a possible four vouchers to bring in and have them hand out four vouchers to bring that spectator into Schofield for the venue. It's all over the board. With the G M C right now, every district is going whichever way they feel best. Right now, I feel like we are doing a very good job of playing it more conservative. There's other districts that, for Moses Lakeland, that are proposing a lot of just wide open. And so, you know, when they come to our venue, they would abide by our rules. When we go there, we would abide by their rules. Now, that doesn't mean when we go there, you know, we're going to just take our masks off for volleyball and play. We're still abiding by our district guidelines, but they would abide by theirs. For football, I know that's a very physical, aggressive sport, in your face. I am purchasing splash guards for all of our 9 through 12 players. And they are Velcro, that they go on the inside of the cage. They are legal for players through the W I A. And it will help, you know, keep all the spill factors inside. We're hoping, I know Lylelanders doing that as well. Not all of the schools we're playing against are, but I'm going to push all those football coaches and the A Ds to make sure that they are hopefully doing that, or at least having some sort of spatial cover because they can wear masks underneath their helmets. I know that might be a little tough, but that's the expectation hopefully that they will give to their coaches and their sports through their administration so that everybody is as safe as possible. And so that pretty much, you know, wraps up what we're looking at. I'll try to, I'll send, you know, kind of a final draft, you'll be in touch with Dr. Sprague, Dr. McKenna. I'm barely in, it's helping a lot too, just looking at what this all should look like and as we move forward. The kids are very happy, you know, kids are, I mean, it's amazing. The outdoor activities and the sports that are going on right now, it's great for the kids. It's great for our coaches, I feel like we have a lot of people that, you know, they could abide by rules and follow rules because, you know, they want this to happen. And it's good for everybody involved.
Tom, how does the spectator deal with the girls tennis?
So with the girls tennis, right now, there was signs put up, there was no tap on it for specimen.
Okay.
We allow everybody to come in. So there were, you know, our bleachers in there, but there were people inside. They were on the bleachers, some were spaced out, faced another way, some people were on the outside like that. I mean, it was, I didn't necessarily, there were some people that were within 60, I'm not going to lie, you know, but I didn't, you know, go up and I wasn't being, I can't police everything, but for the most part, being outside, the numbers weren't huge, there was spacing. And, you know, our trainer, Sammy Loebrek, was there, I talked to our head coaching, Chi, and the Catholic movie coach. They actually came from a club that they played where they said, you know, when people, they did the same thing, they labeled tennis balls, so there was an exchange of, you know, the usage of tennis balls by hand. And she said that everybody that I talked to inside, it ran really well.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Two questions for you. I had one parent complain a little bit, they wish Dave Fayers could also do their sports and not just their mural. Just curious on your thought. Second question was, how much can they video camera so parents can still see at home if they can't come in? Or is that like impossible in the pool? Does that happen at our end here?
No, that's two very good questions. As far as your middle schools and all, we are in a conference with the Wisconsin Valley Conference for our middle school. Obviously, once it gets to high school, their G M C. So the middle school, Wisconsin Valley Conference, and decided that before, you know, I don't know if anybody watched last night, the school board from Wausau just passed athletics for Bill. So the Valley has put together a plan for your high school athletics, but they are also all doing intramurals and so is the G M C. So number one, there really wouldn't be anybody else that's going to play. And a lot of it just came down to the fact of, you know, we really want our athletics to happen, but the seventh and eighth graders, they have time, you know. One year of intramurals, you know, won't be the worst thing for them. Still try to get them to work on skills, drills, and be involved in it, you know, with them looking at all of the other school buildings and how the districts are doing. A lot of them are doing three days a week, and that's probably the protocol we're going to try to follow. Just a three-day-a-week, five-week intramural and call that, you know, an experience, you know, and hopefully look upon it as that and that it's safer for our community and everything, but to keep our middle schools here as well. I know we're sending our ninth and 12th, but again, that is a conference-only schedule and we are just keeping it within that, so. And the conference decided as a whole that we're canceled. And then your second question was...
Cameras. Like, I know the hockey rink, the camera can automatically follow the puck, people can do that easy if you ban all the fans. I don't know how the basketball stadium is.
Yes, so there, I've been in touch with Ben Wilhelm and Dave Corr. Our media productions does have, and they have been filming our athletic events, not every single one of them, and posting them on YouTube, so we have the live capability that way. There is a Pixlock camera that lists free that you can look into getting that you put up and it turns on automatically, there's a Huddle Focus, the same thing, but to be honest, those are very expensive. Pixlock says, well, you can have this camera for free, but the install is a couple thousand dollars. And then whoever wants to watch it, yes, just subscribe to NFHS, which not everyone wants to do. The Huddle Focus camera, if you put that in, it's free on YouTube, but then you have to subscribe to Huddle for all of your sports, and that's an extra $8,500 price they honor for following here, which is ridiculous. So we're working hard with our in-house media productions to get all the events that we can. I mean, obviously, there's two at a time, that'll be tough, and then you also have to staff it, which, you know, we haven't had a problem in the past, but we're just going to work that way and try to make sure all of, you know, our own events as much as we can, our lives inside.
I don't know how many people try to watch it. It's like different than the radio, lots of people like to listen, but it's like a...
Yeah, yeah, and I'll try to get that link out more and get that word out when I go on the breakfast show and tell people, you know, we're going to try and livestream as much as possible. And hopefully that will keep, you know, some people back. And obviously, if they can't come because they don't get a voucher, that's going to be happening that they could have to still see this event.
And so if you're limiting spectators, you have football and volleyball, is this going to affect the athletic department budget?
The money from, that comes in due to that goes to the general fund. So it's not an effect, I mean, it would affect our...
It affects the general fund.
Okay, this is correct, but not necessarily directly to me, but... And we also discussed no concessions to limit any congregating people and any, you know, exchanges of food and stuff. So that's one thing that we also discussed, but that might hurt some of our football games. Our tennis and art club usually runs a concession. Soccer usually runs a concession, Maggie usually makes films her money, and that will put a little bit of hurt on, and we'll have to just find a different avenue for fundraising.
Okay. Okay.
So briefly, and then we'll get to the actual health part of COVID. As Tim mentioned, we still have a number of positions, I would say a few. I'm not even sure I'm aware of all of them at this point. One that I wanted the board to know, you may have heard, and I'm not sure because it wasn't officially signed, so there was no resignation, but our STEEN candidate backed out. So as of right now, this would be for K through 3, we do not have a STEEN teacher. The good news is Jeff, he felt piloted, or not piloted, but facilitated the purchase of a curriculum. So once we get going, we can still use the curriculum and be creative about, you know, who teaches it, et cetera. But at this time, we have no candidates and no hired teachers. With Title and A G R, we're doing some shifting, like Clint said, to use our grant dollars to our advantage. And you'll be approving today's hire tonight, it's on the agenda. So we're moving as quickly as we can and getting those positions covered. What will be coming to you in the future is, right now, we're working on policy changes, if you will, or recommendations for remote learning. I would say that is a teacher's greatest stressor right now, and the principals would concur. What does it look like? It's a little bit different at grade levels. And it feels like we're flying the plane while we're building it. In some respects, that is true. So we're just banding together, working through it, we worked on some drafts, the day of expectations. When those drafts are ready, we'll share them with you so that you understand what it looks like more intricately as well.
I got a question from parents asking if it was going to be like, are we going to have a camera on and their kid's going to watch it, the Zoom classroom, or is there going to be a separate dedicated teacher for...
It could be both, JD. So there could be times that a camera is on and they're invited to join, but that is not the daily expectation. And in some cases, we were able to consolidate in-person learners so that there is, we're calling them a point teacher for remote learning. But like at the middle school, that's not the case. So they're going to share content. So if I'm a fourth grade teacher, for example, I might be responsible for working with the remote learners on math only to lighten, you know, kind of share the wealth.
How is the computer program going? Is it going okay to record more?
Canvas, our learning management system, is going okay. We're still in the, it's called the sandbox, where we're uploading and doing things, but then we're waiting for it to become live. I don't see Rachel here, but she had a meeting with them today so that we can get an update on when that'll happen as well. I do know, teachers, I have so many thank yous about those two days that we invited them, if they were available to come in, work with their colleagues on Canvas, get their rooms set up. We haven't done that before anywhere I've worked. So I heard so much appreciation for that, and I just think that anything we can do to help their load right now would be a good move.
I had another parent wonder if you could do a Facebook Live and they could ask random questions. About what the classrooms are going to look like and, you know, someone would have to redo the question and then you're just beyond camera.
Oh, and then, oh. Okay, so now the actual health part. Like I draw straight over there.
JD's already signed you, I think.
Yeah. Now for the actual health part, thanks to Dr. McKenna and Darlene for being here. I don't see anyone from public health, but I would just like to thank Megan Williams. I know she'll be leaving public health relatively soon, and just thank her for all of her work. And I know Ron Barger's the point person now, should we need to contact public health with any student or staff illness concerns coming up here once we open. So I actually don't have anything to share tonight, do either of you, in terms of updates?
I just wanted to say that I haven't talked to you a lot, but Tom, just very thorough, conscientious, thinking through really the complexities of trying to bring teams together as safely as possible. And I just really appreciate how he's considering things and looking through that. There's a lot, I mean, the whole district has its challenging parts, I appreciate all of your work. Talking about Tom and certainly working with Darlene, you know, consistently as well, just trying to come up with things and make it as safe as possible. I'm impressed by your efforts, it's a lot to do.
Yeah, I, you know, at this point, number one, I was so excited to see people in our hall. It was, it was uplifting and I can get up with it, a lot of people and visitors as well, as they were walking through the hall last Sunday. I have a feeling a lot of, a lot of questions about the what ifs. And to be honest, I am looking forward to the first case school so we can evaluate what we've got placed. We'll build on positives and we will reroute the negatives to make it a positive. But I, I think as a school district, everybody has worked so hard. I think they have a great plan in place medically and health-wise, you know, just encouraging the masks. I am thinking about, I made posters for the little kids and, you know, they like my superhero. So I have Spider-Man wearing the mask. And it says superheroes protect people, be a superhero, wear your mask. And I am actually taking some of the masks that we got from this baby and we're putting little baton envelopes and, and One Moment and some of the superhero envelopes on them. So when they, if they put the mask on me, I can feel like a superhero. So something to kind of help ease them into it. So if anybody can come up with any other ideas that I can do to kind of help the kids all feel better about what they're doing, please let me know, but I, 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 I would rather go, let's, let's just go.
And that concludes our COVID update.
Okay, question, how are the classrooms and everything set up? Is there any possibility for the board to have like a video or something, demonstration of the social distancing?
Sure, sure.
We talked about the lunch breaks and everything, how we are going to get rid of the round tables and have the chairs facing one way, something that we can watch on, allow the parents, the public can look at how, what precautions are taken, probably.
That's a good idea. I would ask for a few days to get a kink cell, but then we will videotape so that, and bring that to the September meeting and we can share it.
I thought I saw a video from the middle school that Heather had put out that did exactly what you're saying. She went through the entire building here and you saw everything in the building. Am I correct on that, Amy? I wasn't dreaming.
We couldn't... Is that in addition to the one for the fourth graders, Amy?
We're still looking at some other specific ones, it was more of a general one, like here's our bus stop.
Okay, okay.
Here's door one, here's the bathroom, here's how we wash our hands, here's where we stand in lunch line.
Okay.
Now we're wearing our masks.
Okay, but we'll get those ready for the next meetings.
You guys have the high schools there, I can share.
Okay.
So results, links to the newsletter, Amy, or are they, or how did you set those up?
We do email, we do email to our parents every Sunday, we do it this Sunday and the next year. So we share, we also use the social to share, we share locations, so we share... So we share on that platform as well. When I watch it, it's a day a year, it's released to 200 view already, so.
Okay.
Yeah, social media might be the best source for you to share that.
Okay. Uh, anything else on COVID update for anybody? Then we will move on to new business and, uh, committee of the whole minutes.
I move the board approve the minutes that the committee of the whole meeting August 11th, 2020.
Any questions or comments? Uh, then all those in favor? And opposed? And we'll go on to item D, which is, uh, 2021 open enrollment snapshot.
Okay, uh, um, open enrollment site, we did a, uh, D P I, it's a very, very recent summer. We, compared to last year, how we ended, we had 177 students, uh, minus those that was due from Opel for various reasons and our graduates, um, we had 145 students. And then we built on those, um, the new applications that we received, those are the applications from February through normally it's end of April, but with COVID, they extended it to the end of June. And we had 26 applications there. And then, um, more recently, uh, from July 1st through the 19th, we've had 43 additional applications for enrolled out students. So, um, it's about a, a 37 student increase from where we left off last year. So, and that number is changing every day. We'll know more when we do our third Friday call, then we have a solid call at that point. So our enrolled in students, we remain the same as how we ended last year, minus graduates from last year and then we added some new students in the district. And then you can see where our students are going and where they're coming from. Also, our higher students and the homeschool students, um, that report is a little harder to read. I don't get names, I just get numbers of students and families. Um, but as of the 19th, we have about 111 homeschool students. So in that report, the homeschool students have to, the parents have to report by the 15th of October, so I'll have a solid number at that time.
Okay. Any questions or any of that?
Where's Mary's bar room? How far away is that? Gets me out of here.
It is a virtual program room, so they don't have to go there to a tour.
I think it's the same thing with walk a shot, I goes to.
Okay, then we will go on to board action and consideration to adopt the 2021 fiscal year budget.
I move the board adopt the 2020-2021 fiscal year's budget as presented at the next budget hearing, the total expenditure in all funds in the amount of $33,122,947.
Second. Okay, any questions?
Commentists, Tim did a fine job of putting all the data together and presenting it. Thank you, Tim, for your hard work and your staff.
Did you, Tim, I missed it. Is it balanced? I don't know yet.
J D, it really, I mean, because we were expecting to fund, fund balance, that's how balancing is going on our spending, your C, our revenue.
Okay. Anything else? Uh, then we will do a roll call.
Holden?
Yes.
Deve?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Newfeld?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
Alder?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes, yes.
And we'll go on to item D, consideration to approve North Elementary Parking Lot Lease Agreement.
I move the board approve the North Elementary Parking Lot Lease Agreement as presented.
Second. Okay, any questions or comments on that? Jake talked about that at the call meeting. But any questions since then? Then, uh, we will go ahead with a roll call.
Deve?
Yes, yes.
Long?
Yes.
Newfeld?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
Alder?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
That passes and we'll go on to item C, consideration to approve the 2021, 22, 23 Antigo Hockey Association Agreement.
I move the board approve the 2020, 21, 2021 and the 2022, 2023 Antigo Hockey Association Agreement as presented.
I'm sorry.
And any questions or comments about that?
Um, are the numbers pretty much the same as they've been in past, with just a slight increase because it looks like it only goes up to about $500 a year? Is that pretty much in line with what it has been in the past, Tom?
Yeah, I was just going off of a quality test, we discussed that to $500. Uh, the increase, he just passed in here. Yes, he's keeping it safe.
Okay, thank you.
Would you not collect as much on the trade receipts this year?
Grabbing, yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Okay. I know that in the past, we compared ice skating or our hockey program to the industry. Last year, it's the same, just, is it, can you get it larger?
I can't hear, I can't hear. We can't hear you, Tim.
He said it's a lot cheaper.
At least then they just can speak.
It's like a hundred dollars an hour, I was like, is it E T Everest or something?
It's really, my, my comparison is pretty...
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Then do a roll call.
Long?
Yes.
Newfeld?
Yes, yes.
Hyatt?
Yes, yes.
Schrader?
Yes, yes.
Alder?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Deve?
Yes, yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And we will go on to, uh, I do consideration to approve the 2020, 2021 Medical Advisor Agreement.
I move the board approve the Medical Advisor Agreement for 2020-2021.
Second. Any questions or comments on that? Then all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes and we'll go on to Report of Employee Resignation and...
I move the board approve the following resignations. Michelle Napkovich, High School Administrative Assistant. Amy Guthrie, I M C Clerk. Cassandra Peturka, Food Service. Andrea Wonka, Food Service. Jessica Klempke, Special Ed Instructional Assistant. And Retirementary Cindy Wall, R I O One Teacher.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Just so we thank them all for their time with the district and appreciate their hard work.
Okay, thank you for that, Mike. Then all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll go on to the next item. Report our district to hires.
I move the board approve the following new hires. Amy Doms, Director of Curriculum and Instructions. Bethany Gerhardt, Art. Christopher Haggerty, Middle School Special Education. Helen Gilhouse, Custodian. Shanty's Clarice, Title One Reading Teacher. And Amanda Lepke, Housekeeper, Part Eight.
Second. Any questions or comments on that? And we do a roll call.
Newfeld?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes, yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
Alder?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes, yes.
Deve?
Yes, yes.
Long?
Yes.
And we'll go on to the report of donations.
Move the board accept the following donations. $100 from Johnson Electric Oil for fill a backpack full of need. $100 from Paul Willey for the Clara American Aquatic Center. $750 from Antigo Lions Club for fill a backpack full of need. $150 from Wrangler Ford for fill a backpack full of need. And $500 from Montse K A Inc. for Navokan School Forest Building Project for a total of $1,700.
Second. Okay, and thank you to all those donors. Any other additional comments or questions?
What's the Ponse, Amy, think?
Ponse is, uh, uh, they may be timber harvesting equipment.
Oh, okay.
And so Ponse, I think, is probably the dealership up in Monica.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes and we will go on to confirm the next meeting.
Is that supposed to be September?
Yeah, it'll be September 21st.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I didn't know if you were seven, I thought. Okay, thanks.
Okay, and so the next meeting, the September?
Actually, it's the 22nd.
Yes.
September 22nd.
Whatever it may be.
Okay, so the September 22nd here. And with that, we'll have a motion for adjournment.
Go move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So you got that title. Set the heat to your turn now.
Yeah. What's that? No, um, went to the event at Golden, the Grand Grand.